All right, um, I'll call the June 10th, 2025 Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting to order.
Could we have roll call or pledge of allegiance? Sorry.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll do roll call.
Mayor Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Lenko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier?
Here.
All right, let's move on to public discussion.
I'll come up here first because I gotta clear out soon. And, uh, my name is Howard Smith. I live at 60 Woodward Heights Boulevard. And I'm here, I want to talk about Woodward Heights and the traffic calming. I've been watching it now for about nine months, and I thought I'd just give you some feedback on my thoughts on it. And, uh, the first thing I've noticed is it's helped a little bit. And one thing I notice is the fast cars that have always been fast are still going through fast right down the center of the road. I see them run cars into the parking spots. I hear horns blow from that. So I don't know if maybe a yellow stripe down the center of the road might help. It probably wouldn't do diddly because they're still gonna drive down the center of the road fast. Um, it has dramatically reduced the amount of trucks on the road. We went from like the 50, 60 semis a day to where I might see one or two a week. But we've had, and I email James a lot, over the garbage trucks that were coming through six days a week, spewing their garbage out as they go by there. And in the spring and, or when the trees aren't foliage, you can see the plastic stuck in trees. I've seen it blow out of the trucks, wind blow it right up into the trees. So, you know, that's a problem when you have all these garbage trucks. Now, we're down to where I see one priority truck every Friday about noon blasts through there and garbage spews out. And then there's another GFL truck that comes out of the industrial park carrying one of those big dumpsters from, looks like full of car-
All right, get to the train station. Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Yep.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, uh, Commission staff, brews. Ted Zachary, 68 Devonshire. And I have just a couple of things, something new too. But I just want to say that, um, uh, story time is going well in Ferndale. And meeting regularly Thursday. And American Sign Language is going really well, too. And I probably should mention this. Uh, my old instructor of American Sign Language is, I think she's gonna come this time, um, on this Wednesday. I'm nervous about it because I'm practicing, and she wonders if I'm practicing or not. I hope I don't get tongue tied. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you very much. We have a lot of fun in American Sign Language. But the big thing that I have to report now is, uh, is about the garbage. The garbage is, you know, we pay for the garbage that's at the curb. If it's not at the curb, we don't have to pay for that. So one way of getting that stuff off the curb is don't put it on, obviously. So if something breaks, instead of putting it to the curb, you would go to the repair cafe. So you would bring your item that's broken, and the repair cafe people could fix it. Such as coffee makers, vacuums, I see a lot of vacuums being thrown out. Clocks, radios, computers, and sewing machines. I was surprised, I went there myself, uh, in Detroit to the repair cafe, and a lot of people brought their sewing machines, which I was surprised. That weighs a lot of weight. So my, uh, visual aid is, uh, something that, uh, I could bring to them if I needed to have it repaired. They will try to repair it, there's no guarantee.
Do they repair it and give it back to you, or do they repair it and donate it?
No, they, they give it right back to you.
Like that you got it, got it.
So, that's-
Where is the repair cafe?
Oh, thank you for- It's gonna be in Ferndale, at the Ferndale Library.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this, uh, on the June 28th, that's a Saturday, from noon to four o'clock. I think it's gonna be good. I'm gonna go there and bring, uh, some of my stuff that needs to-
I have a sewing machine that could use some love.
I'll see you there.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
Be sure not to curse at your instructor in, uh, Sign Language.
Yes. That's yes.
Okay.
What date was it?
Uh, June 28th.
Thank you.
A Saturday. Ferndale Library. 12 to 4 o'clock.
Yes, thanks Ted.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Marie Hainer Patty. I live at 12 Norwich Road, um, have lived there since 1989. I'm here to discuss the issues regarding the, uh, Water Resources Commission permit work for the water main replacement that's happening on Oakdale and tied into all of the east-west streets that feed off of that. As you're aware, um, the work has been going on for much of the late spring and early summer. And that on Wednesday last week, they started the work of opening and reclosing the valves to see how that would work. And based on what they understood, this would be a 10 or 15 or half an hour, um, transaction for each of the streets. And of course, that was not the case. We have a water system that is approaching 100 years old, in some cases, perhaps even older in some areas. And the water mains, both valves, both valves broke on Norwich Road. We were unaware that this work was happening, other than an email that had gone out earlier from the previous week, um, anticipating that the work would be happening without specific, any specificity concerning what day and what actions would be taken. So when the mains broke, we went without water, without potable water from about 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning until about 8 o'clock at night. No one had made any provisions, no one had stockpiled water, no one understood that this was what was going to happen. And it seems disingenuous to believe that we would not have done any sort- or the, or the Oakland County Water Resources Commission would not have done any sort of risk assessment to understand what were the repercussions of doing this work on such an old water system. And so the next day, after we, okay, so that presented, our friends gave us five gallons of water from their tap in water jugs. And we took a couple of carboys, the big jugs, up to the rec and filled them up in the kitchen so we would have water. Because it really, we didn't know how long it was gonna be. And then we took ourselves out to dinner because there was no way to like, you know, do anything, cleaning, washing up, anything of the sort. So I came in the next morning and spoke with Jim, um, about this. And the understanding was that the notifications that had happened were what was required, the minimum level required by Eagle, Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, who is responsible for permitting the work for the Water Resources Commission, for GLWA, and for DWSD, which is the source of our water system. And I've dealt with GLWA and, um, and DWSD and Eagle on a number of projects. Again, I've been managing construction projects, particularly with older buildings in the metropolitan Detroit area for over 50 years. I, I couldn't imagine that anyone had not made this level of risk assessment to think, what the fuck's gonna go wrong? Because something is going to go wrong. We just know it's going to go wrong. And the fact that we didn't have that happen was a significant issue. And how would we address this? Now we've seen, at least on Norwich Road, and I don't know if all the other blocks got it, the notification of the water main shut offs again happening, happening tomorrow, which is what needs to happen. We can't rely on email. We need to put up notices on doors. My husband tracks the Pleasant Ridge, uh, city emails. I track the school district ones. Um, but we have a large number of people who don't have email or don't utilize email. I'm retired, I don't have to check my email. You know, it's not essential. The, the level of communication that we should expect internally within the city and with the Water Resources Commission is notification in advance. Understanding of what needs to happen, that people need to be put on notice, that they may need to store water in advance of this work happening. So that's that. We've got a notice for tomorrow, and I assume other streets who are in the same experience will be, have the same notification. The next step is, the question I do on my morning walk and talk with my neighbors, is we need to see the schedule. So we know this work is happening. You can see the maps and show who's got lead mains and who's got lead leads, and then who's got lead from the stopcock to their house. My house, everything's lead, and oddly I have ductile copper from the stopcock to my house, which is weird because it's all galvanized piping on the inside of my house. So yay, I've got dielectric connections. So the, the issue is, we need to know, and the community needs to know, what, what the next steps are. When this work is done, what are we looking at? What's projec-, just like we did with the streets? What are we looking at as the schedule for this? What's the, what priorities go first, what streets can be expected? Obviously, we still need to maintain access for emergency access. You can't take down all the side streets, you, you wouldn't be able to get through with emergency vehicles. But that information needs to be put together and presented back to the populace. I think it's really important that now that we've seen, oh, bleep, this has just gone, you know, south, what are we going to expect going forward? What's the timeframe till we have all the water mains repaired? That we don't have lead piping any longer. So that's the information I'm asking for. I think that I'm, this, this notification is a step in the right direction, and that's what we should expect as a minimum. But now we need to get to the next step, which is to convey the information as to the schedule going forward for the next five, 10 years that this is gonna take. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, seeing no other public discussion, I think we'll move on to the liaison reports. Uh, Commissioner Schmier?
Thank you, Mayor. So the big thing, um, right now is keep an eye on your email, also on the Facebook pages. The Historical Commission is starting to look for docents for the upcoming, um, in September, the Home and Garden Tour. So if anyone is interested in being a docent, it's a two-hour shift, it's a lot of fun. Um, you get discounted tickets to the tour, plus you get invited to the super fun, sorry, I'm stealing the Art Council's party, but the super fun Afterglow party.
You can't do it.
Okay, fine. The really awesome Afterglobe, it doesn't sound as good. So if anyone is interested, please reach out to me, um, or there is a Google Sheet available on PRPR. And keep an eye on your email because it does go out to a lot of people if you ever showed interest in the past. Beyond that, um, that's my, that's my big news. The museum will be open on the 21st, um, 10 until noon, so feel free to come by. And actually, I was talking to Commissioner Perry last night, and she is going into a house that was just sold, but she's actually taking pictures of the home, and she's gonna send it to the Historical Commission because the new owners are gonna make some updates. So just a good reminder, if anyone has pictures of their house now, in the past, please bring it on over to the Historical Museum, and we will put it in the file for future people.
Can you take digital files at the-
Absolutely. You could, they can be emailed to, uh, prhistorical@cityofpleasantridge.org. So you can drop off physical, or you can email, or you can even show up at the museum with your phone and we can help you at the time. And also, if you only have hard copies, we can scan them at the museum, too.
Cool.
So, a lot of ways. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Budnick?
Thank you, Mayor. Relatively small agenda here for us at the rec this evening, relatively speaking. Number one is tomorrow evening's event, which is the Pride Swim. And this is Pride Swim with a huge exclamation point, Pride Swim! So that's tomorrow, 8 to 10 p.m. One guest per resident allowed, per reservation, so be sure that the guests are aware of all the pool rules, and feel free to bring in your own snacks and beverages. Just a reminder, no glass on the pool deck, so that those types of rules do apply, and it's limited to the first 50 pre-registered guests.
No glass and no glitter.
Right.
It clogs the pool.
There will be music and a few freebies there. So it was fun last year, I popped in, it was a lot of fun, and I hope everyone enjoys. Be sure to register. Number two out of three is there's, I don't know how exciting this is, there's a paper shred truck event.
I think it's very exciting.
I think it's exciting, too. I do have a box in my house ready for-
Well, here are the particulars for you. It's Saturday, the 14th, this month, and that's from 10 to 2 at the Community Center. And this is for PR residents only. There's a limit of two banker boxes per resident. Paper only, no credit cards, or all Jim's old CDs. Staples are okay, paper clips must be removed, no junk mail, sensitive personal documents only. So that's what you wanna save for this event. And you must be in line by 2 p.m. in order to get your document shredded. And finally, the family campout. Is this coming, or it's actually two Fridays? It's Friday, June the 20th, and that goes till Saturday morning. It's a fun event, I've done before, it's a great time. So join in the fun, and this is a campout behind the PR Community Center. Activities will include, but are not limited to, the hot, hot dog dinner, there's movies, crafts, swimming, and this event is free, however, you must, uh, pre-register. So that deadline to pre-register is this Friday, the 13th.
That is such a sweet event.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun. And, oh, a reminder that Chief Reed might say too, but I'll, I'll cover. It is to remind residents that parking is limited on the busy pool days and rentals and events. So just, uh, be careful when you're going through the parking lot. There's a lot of little kiddos walking around and running around, so as you're driving through, just be respectful of all of those coming in and out of either the gym or the pool, et cetera. So a gentle reminder there. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Commissioner Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the Pleasant Ridge Arts Council could not meet in May because we had a lot of illnesses and, um, absent, uh, travel schedules that we conflicted with. But we are going to meet on Wednesday, June 18th at 4:30. And we are still moving forward with lots of great, um, moving to the next level with working to implement ideas and figure out where that's gonna go. But we'll keep you updated as, as things like come together. So thank you. So June 18th, 4:30 will be our next meeting right here.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of quick words, uh, from the school district. Uh, they're out, school's out for the summer. They did ask for everyone to just be mindful that because school is out, there are lots of kids that are still out on the roads, on the sidewalks, you know, crossing driveway paths. Just to be extra observant during the summer months about, uh, the kids being out. And they had nothing else to report this time, so that's all I've got. Uh, we'll move on to Commissioner Lenko.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so Planning and DDA did not meet since our last meeting, uh, nor will we as of the next meeting. So, uh, expect an update, not the next meeting, but the following. If anybody's interested in, uh, attending a super fun Planning and DDA meeting, uh, that'll be July 28th in these, in these chambers here, 7 p.m. Uh, and again, we hope to continue to flesh out the, uh, standing agenda, touching on the key points from the newly minted master plan.
Right.
So, uh, more, more in two meetings.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move on to governmental reports.
Good evening. Just a reminder for everybody in the community that we do have the virtual home safety inspection. And then we do participate in the state's, um, smoke detector program. So anybody who owns their home, if they take that and they realize they don't have enough smoke detectors or they need assistance, because, you know, we come provide them for free, we actually install them. So if you call us, we have to install them. We also, the state just got a allotment of carbon monoxide detectors, so I'm working right now to try to get some allocated to our department. If we're able to do that, though, we could also assist the people that need help getting those really important detectors put into the homes, because that's a dangerous one, because you don't see it, you don't smell it. It just, you start not feeling well and you realize something's going on, so we're working on that. And then I think there is limited, um, availability from state. They have the specialty detectors for people with different, like, hearing, um, impairments and things like that that a regular smoke alarm would not work for. And we have access to reach out to try to attain some of those for our residents, too, if they need assistance getting those for their homes. So anything like that, any doubt, just reach out to us and see what we can do to help to keep everybody safe in their homes, so. Especially as everybody's home for the summer, so.
Right. Thank you very much.
And tomorrow, our engine is being photographed for the calendar, and this is a huge undertaking. I spent the entire day today driving around with a photographer planning tomorrow. It was like an eight-hour day, and then it'll be about 12 hours of pictures tomorrow.
Wow.
And it's, I thought it was just come take a picture and, you know, it goes on the calendar, no, it's, it's a thing, so. Um, if you see us moving around tomorrow, um, with the engine on the road, that's what we're doing. So the photographer's in, yeah, hop in, pose, come join the fun, so we'd love to have you.
Good evening. As far as police department stuff, uh, not a whole lot going on. We're patrolling Woodward Heights. Uh, our officers are out everywhere. Officer Lipa hit a detail just beforehand, I heard her calling out traffic stops left and right over on Millington, so. Police department stuff, we're, we're just plugging along, things are good. Not a whole lot of crime, which is great. People are locking their doors, so please lock your doors. The one thing I did want to bring up is to those at home, uh, I know a lot of people the past couple of days have got the text message that says that you have outstanding tickets or outstanding tolls. Don't send them any money, don't go to that website. We had someone in the station today asking about it. Number one, Michigan doesn't have a Department of Motor Vehicles, we have a Secretary of State. Number two, they aren't gonna call you by text message and say, hey, you have outstanding fines, because the Secretary of State doesn't collect money for tickets, the courts do. So once again, if you have any type of thought that this might be fake, call us, let us look at it, we'll help you out.
My mom got one of those yesterday, and I said, well, Michigan doesn't have a plus 63 area code.
We don't have toll roads.
And we don't have toll roads.
Yeah, uh, I was with the deputy chief from Huntington Woods yesterday, and he pulled it out and he goes, hey, look, I'm in trouble. About two minutes later, I said, oh, look, I'm with you. They were making the rounds this week. Other than that, just wanted to bring up something, uh, just, it's my personal pet peeve. The Michigan turnarounds, we see it a lot at Oxford when you're hitting southbound Woodward to northbound Woodward. I can't stand the Michigan turnarounds, but my main reason for that is because if they are not marked two lanes, that is one lane. Uh, so for those at home, they are made bigger so that the trucks can make that turnaround. We deal with crashes where people either pull up on the left side, and the person who's out on the, the far side isn't looking, because they're looking at the traffic coming northbound, and then they turn and we have a crash that way, or vice versa. So, uh, just something to keep in mind, and I'll start harping on that, as well as lock your doors, so.
I have to remind myself of that one.
Yeah. It just looks the other way when I'm out on the road.
Good luck with that, Rob.
All right.
My pet peeve is I don't have enough money in my bank account, so. You're complaining about that, too.
All right. Uh, we'll go on to the consideration of the consent agenda. Uh, one item I will point out is that it is, uh, Pride Month, we have a resolution for that. Um, as Mayor of the city, I'm just super proud to be here. It's an amazing time of the year for a lot of people. And, uh, if you've not noticed, come to the Memorial Park, we've got our flag, uh, proudly flying as well. We would normally have the building lit up in colors, but I understand our little, our little remote control that does that isn't working this year, so we'll figure that out for another year.
It required, yeah, it required an app.
Oh.
You had to download an app to control the lights. And it hasn't been updated.
Hasn't been updated, so. Maybe next year we'll do the, we'll light up the building. Uh, but, uh, please, everyone in town, just take this opportunity to be proud of this city that we're in. I look around at other communities, and I'll tell you, we are, uh, just handling things pretty darn well here. And it's partly because of the care and pride that people take in the city. So I'm very appreciative of it, I know the whole City Commission is. So with that, may I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
All right, may we have a vote?
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Oh, did you have something?
I was wondering, he was gonna present that then or now.
Oh. Oh, yes, sorry. Item, next item is, uh, the police ordinance introduction and call for public hearing. Sorry.
So hopefully you looked at the packet and saw that, uh, I am requesting that we have a public hearing to add these additional ordinances. I'm gonna give just a brief breakdown of what this takes. So, give you a little taste of if you're a, a, a brand-new detective, what you have to go through. So one of the officers goes out on the road, finds a misdemeanor charge that we do not have an ordinance for. The officer arrests that person. After they arrest the per, well, they're, first they say, do I probable cause to arrest this person? 51% this person did it. Yes, I arrest them, we take them to jail. While that person's in custody, then the supervisor, either Lieutenant Tyler or myself, look at it and say, okay, is there 51% that this person did it? Yes, great. Now we take that report, we send it to the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office. Oakland County Prosecutor looks at it, says, was there 51% that this person did the crime? Chance that they did the crime? Yes, they did. They prepare a warrant. After we get the warrant, then we go over to 45th District Court, most of the time it's 45th District Court. We have to stand in front of the judge, tell them the facts of the case. If the judge believes that there was a 51% chance or more that the person committed the crime, then they sign that warrant. After they sign the warrant, then we do a, um, arraignment. The person has decided whether they get bond or not, and then they're either released or they stay in jail until their court date. Having these ordinances makes it so that, instead of going through all those processes, oh, let me back up one more time. If it happens on a Friday night, it's even worse. Uh, because to get out to the prosecutor's office, we have to go out on Saturday morning, you're calling in people because that person's sitting in jail, and we need to get that person in front of a judge as soon as possible to see if they can be released or not. The addition of these ordinances takes a lot of that out, because the officers can simply, they can still arrest, but they can write a ticket, and it's taken care of by our local prosecutor. We don't have to burden the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office for low-level misdemeanors. So if you look through there, uh, there's a few of them, I can go through them at, each one if you'd like, which is probably preferable. Right now, we have hindering, or I'm asking for hindering, uh, police or peace officer by false identification. What that is, is basically someone giving us a fake license or a fake name. Before, we were using interfering with police, that's not an appropriate charge. Interfering with police is more, we're trying to arrest someone or do something, and people are disregarding that, trying to push us, that type of thing. So, um, that's one where we can just write a ticket once we verify the identity of the person. Second one, resisting arrest, pretty popular, I think we all know what that is. But that's one that we didn't have on our books in Pleasant Ridge. So every time we'd arrest someone for that, we'd have to contact the Oakland County Prosecutors, go through that whole process again. Going to skip the third one for a moment. The fourth one is fail to pay for goods or services. So we don't have a retail fraud ordinance, we're basically shoplifting. This one is, I think, a little bit better than a retail fraud ordinance, because it's going to cover a multitude of issues. This is, if someone goes into a business where they have something for sale, we can write them, and they steal it, we can write them a ticket on the scene, or we can arrest, or both. But also, you have circumstances, not that many people use cabs anymore, but they take a cab ride, they get out in Pleasant Ridge, and they don't want to pay the driver. We can deal with it that way. We can go to the updated 2025 version of they canceled the ride after they get in the car, and now we have a dispute between the Uber driver and the passenger, because they've canceled it, and we have someone trying to get out of the car, and the person's charged even though they've, you know, driven whatever, a half mile. The last one is the super drunk. So anything over a point one-seven blood alcohol content, you're considered in Michigan to be under the super drunk law. It adds enhanced penalties, adds license restrictions, other issues. This was one where we would have to go through the Oakland County Prosecutor to get that done. It may take months to get done. This is something that our city prosecutor, Eric and Jean Lombard, they can take care of over Forty-Fifth District Court. Gives them a little bit more wiggle room on dealing with cases as well. So sometimes when things get knocked down, they can say, oh, well, you know, we have the super drunk ordinance, we can go after that. You're going to lose your license for six months or a year, I can't recall, but. And then if we jump back to number three, number three is a catch-all. So while we have a lot of laws on the books now, every once in a while, we get one that we're like, oh, wow, we haven't encountered that before. So when the Michigan legislature comes up with any type of new misdemeanors, I won't have to come back to you and say, hey, can you add this misdemeanor that the state just did, because this is a cover-all. Anything that is a misdemeanor in Michigan will be able to write under city ordinance.
France.
Correct, any type of good, correct, any type of goods or service. So if they did a retail fraud, if they, yeah, I mean, they bolt out of Whistlestop, or even, you know, Dr. Zervos was there, you know, they all of a sudden bolted out of there. We could use it for that, even though they've already left, and you know, they just failed to make payment. We could use it on something like that as well, rather than having to go through the Oakland County Prosecutor and burden them with some low-level stuff, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for clarifying. For your help in this.
No problem, thank you very much for your consideration.
May we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that a public hearing be established for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on the proposed police ordinance amendments.
Second? All right, may we have a vote?
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. All right, let's talk about the budget.
Let's, shall we? Tonight, we'll be holding a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year '26 budget. You may adopt the budget after the public hearing. I have a, well, can be a brief presentation that you would have seen last month, but.
That's right.
Sorted out our technological issues. Last month, what had happened was when we installed the EV charger, they had to shut the building power down in order to do that, and it, when it started up again, it fried the controls. So that's why we couldn't get anything to work for the meeting, so that's why we weren't able to broadcast or present at the meeting, so. We've gotten that fixed. Budget documents are always available at cityofpleasantridge.org/budget. Headline is a point four-six mil reduction in our local millage rate from 2024 to 2025. You'll see the proposed 2025 millage rate is twenty-one point three-two-three-five mils, that's a reduction of about two percent. So with the three percent inflation increase in taxable values, we'll see about a, most residents who have been here will see a one percent increase in their taxes. So again, lagging inflation, as headly is designed to do. This table shows millage rate trends over the past six budget years. And over that time, we've been essentially flat, but that's including introducing the new water infrastructure millage. But then the parks improvement millage rolling off, and headly reductions in the remainder mean that we've seen basically no change over the last six years in our local millage rates. On the right-hand side, our millage rollback factor this year is point nine-nine-three-five. We saw property tax revenue growth of four point oh-one percent, which is actually about the lowest property tax revenue growth that we've seen in the city. Taxable value only growing four point four percent, that's because of home sales and the value popping up, so taxable value increases greater than inflation, which is why there's a rollback in the millage rate, to make sure that revenues only go up by the rate of inflation. And what we've seen is taxable value increases tapering off in the last few years, so it's just stabilization. Good luck reading this, but this is the budget summary, showing the past few years of actual results, this year's budget and projected fiscal year '27 and '28, basically showing that we're projecting a balanced budget for the next three years, including the assessing cost increase, which we can talk about on the next item. Here's our total city millage rate over the last roughly, geez, I guess forty years. And over that time, it's been fairly consistent. You see the big bump up in 2015, 16, that was what everyone was doing. Ferndale just renewed their headly override from that same time. That was coming out of the results of the Great Recession and the big property value declines we saw during that time. That's one of the perils of Michigan's local government financing system, is when you have a big drop in value, there's no mechanism to roll millage rates back up. So even though value, property value starts to increase back up, the city, all cities, their revenue will be knocked back in time. So that's why you saw a whole host of headly overrides in that 2013, 14, 15 period, including us. So that was that big jump during that time to reset after the Great Recession, and then you see since then, it's slowly been tapering down. We did add the police pension millage and the water infrastructure millage since then, so that's slowed that decline in local millage rates, but we're addressing, those are really addressing the two biggest outstanding funding issues the community faces. Millage rate breakdown, forty-seven percent of your tax bill goes, stays here in Pleasant Ridge. The other fifty-three percent goes to other jurisdictions. The main one being Ferndale School District, which is at thirty-one percent. And then you have the county, the county operating for about nine percent. The intermediate school district at six, community, Oakland County Community College at three percent. Transportation is two percent, that's SMART, and the Oakland County Public Transportation Authority. And then other is the Zoo Art Authority here on Clinton Metro Parks, some of those other taxing jurisdictions. Local millage rate, you can see where our millage rate falls, sort of middle of the pack here. Notable peer communities, Huntington Woods has a higher millage rate than we do. That's always the first place I look to benchmark. Lathrop Village, also another comparable to us, has a higher millage rate than we do, so. It reflects well for us. Median household income, you can see that we are amongst the group of five up there, Birmingham, Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, Bloomfield Hills, Orchard Lake, that are sort of different than the rest. Highly residential communities, fortunate in a lot of respects. Total revenue per capita, this is total city revenues for all sources per person. And again, you can see we're in the, sort of the higher end of the main pack, but behind some of those other communities, Bloomfield Hills, Birmingham, Royal Oak, Huntington Woods. Property tax revenue per capita by millage rate, you can see, again, those five communities, Orchard Lake, Birmingham, Bloomfield Hills, Pleasant Ridge, and Huntington Woods have a higher property tax revenue per capita. Our millage rate is, again, in sort of a normal range. These are also highly residential communities that rely more on property taxes. When you have a community that's more commercial and industrial, you have other property, other revenue sources, you're not as reliant on property taxes to fund your operations. And residential requires more money per acre, per person, to service than industrial, so it requires higher revenue sources. Total revenue per household is a percentage of household income. This is a measure of how affordable is a community for the people who live there. And you see that our residents are paying about five percent of household income. That's what the city's generating. When we look at, so, yes, we are, the city is affordable for the people who live here. When you look at some of those communities that are on the right-hand side of the chart, they're paying, the total city revenue is a higher percentage of the household income on a per-person basis. Inflation-adjusted general fund revenues by source, again, over time since the mid-eighties, over the last forty years, you can see how those trends have changed. The big blue blob at the bottom is property tax revenue. So as things like the orange blob above, state shared revenue have come to represent a smaller slice of the pie as Michigan continues to underfund its local governments, we've had to pick up the slack and tax ourselves more to maintain the same level of funding. And you can see that it's been fairly consistent, around that three point nine million per year on an inflation-adjusted basis over the last forty years. And then this is just normalizing that to a hundred percent. Again, state shared revenue, the bottom line, the blue line, is the actual annual shared revenue the state provides. We're still below where it was in the late nineties. But when you adjust that for inflation, the state was providing nearly $800,000 of annual shared revenue in the mid-eighties. That was still nearly $700,000 of annual revenue, these are in 2025 dollars, of course, but in the late nineties. And then that dropped precipitously after the one state recession that Michigan was in for most of the knots. And that hasn't really changed since then, now we're at $350,000 a year. So again, that's a, that's a big, that's a big drop in shared revenue that we've had to adjust for over the years.
We saw a little bump for the COVID money, but that was.
A little bit, yeah, yeah, the state made some noise about fixing shared revenue and went back right to where it was before. Property value trends, so the blue line is taxable, the dashed green line is assessed property value. You can see that compression that happened after the Great Recession, where assessed property values declined, actual taxable property value declined, and they got very close to each other. That's, again, started to separate again as Prop A limits taxable value increases to the rate of inflation, but the assessed value is just the market value of homes. And when you adjust taxable values for inflation, you can see that in 2009, we had a inflation-adjusted 2025 equivalent value of about $200 million of taxable property value, and it took us over a decade to get back to an inflation-adjusted level for that taxable property value. So that was, it set us back a decade. Had that continued, our taxable value now would be probably twenty percent higher than it is as it exists, which again is why millage rates had to increase. Look at those lines, it's amazing. Forgot I had those in there. Where do we spend our money? These are expenses, we invest in our police. So our police expenses per capita are some of the highest in the county. The communities that are down there at zero, those are public safety, combined public safety, where they don't have separate police and fire. Fire expenses per capita, thank you Ferndale Fire for being a very cost-effective solution for us. And when you combine it all together, what's your combined police and fire cost? We're right there next to Ferndale, actually, in terms of what our total cost is per capita. And again, that's just, part of that is running a department, a full police department with 2,500 residents. We have more police officers per resident than almost anyone else in the county, because we have to, you have a minimum number that you have to have to have a 24/7 police department. So, you know, Royal Oak may have, you know, on a relative basis, maybe a third of the officers per capita. So it's, you know, more cost-effective and easier to run a police department with a bigger population base. So, you know, we definitely, that's a reality that we have to deal with. But on the whole, we're generally comparable to most communities. Again, parks and recreation expenses per capita, I say it's resort season has opened in Pleasant Ridge, and, again. The other, the other part of this is if you want to be a small community with a pool.
There you have it.
There you have it, Huntington Woods and Pleasant Ridge, right there. And then the other community that has a pool is Troy, so even they're a large community, and they're the third most expenses per capita. Pension, as I mentioned, that was one of the biggest outstanding issues that we had to solve. You can see our police pension funding level, the trend there from, again, that 2,000 peak, and then the funding level of the police pension as it declined, and a pretty continuous down into the right rate up until around 2021, when it turned around. And that was when the police pension millage funding started to really come on the line, and we were able to do a lot of catch-up funding in the pension millage. Had we persisted with the trends that were existent without the millage in place to provide that catch-up funding, we'd have some, some big issues, and we would have had to face some serious questions about, you know, what we prioritize with funding. But fortunately, the voters approved that, and it's making a difference. So we're on track to increase our police and our overall pension funding level. Part of this also is the changes we made in the pension benefits that we offer. We moved to a hybrid plan instead of the straight-to-find benefit plan, which over time will reduce our pension liabilities naturally, so we're on the right track. And that's all I have on the budget. Happy to answer any questions anyone has, either now or after the public hearing, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, just a quick question, maybe it's more related to the next topic, but, you know, as you pointed out, we're relying on property taxes, it's like a residential-heavy neighborhood without a lot of industry or retail. And like, do we need to prepare for any, like, it seems like services will be the same with Oakland County, but, I guess I don't know what the question I'm asking is, but like, I'm not happy with Oakland County's ninety percent increase in these costs. And if we do explore some alternative provider, like, how do we ensure that there's no gap in the main source of our revenue?
You really hit the biggest consideration, the crux of the issue. We'll talk more about this in the next agenda item.
Okay, cool, cool.
I will say, for budget purposes, I have, we present the three-year budget. So we adopt the fiscal year '26 budget, '27 and '28 are presented for planning purposes. But it's helpful, because when we are looking at things like this cost increase for assessing services, I built in Oakland County's numbers that they have in their proposed three-year contract into the three-year budget. So should we decide to stay with the county, we're already projecting and planning for that expense. And again, we can talk more about that, but you are correct, in terms of budgeting and city finances, having accurate and good assessment for property tax collection purposes is one of the most important things, really, that we do. So when we look at cost savings or privatizing things, you know, there's some things where, you know, if it doesn't work out, you move on and find somebody else. If this one doesn't work out, it has a material impact on our finances, on everything. And in fact, if you don't accurately assess, and then you lose those taxable values, well, now you're locked in there forever, because you can't catch up, because you're limited in your taxable value increases by Prop A to the rate of inflation. So you can't reassess something and increase the value of it ten percent, because there was an assessing error.
Right.
So you really can't get assessing wrong. And again, that's all I'll say for now, we'll talk more about that.
Oh, and then on state revenue sharing, is there anything we can be doing, like, can we be lobbying?
I make it up to Lansing probably every couple of months, just to hear what's being made available. As is the case with our issue with Oakland County, so goes Lansing, unfortunately. It's not easy to have this discussion with Lansing right now. Not to say that we wouldn't, or that we're not checking, we're not, you know, trying as much as we can, but it's, it's difficult.
Eight hundred K back in the nineties, eight hundred K would be, that'd be a nice extra cushion.
Yes, and the grant process is even a little strangled, so as, it's very much project-dependent, so if you don't have projects that fit the grants, it's hard to get extra money. And then the money itself is shrinking, because money from the federal government is shrinking. And then the money itself is shrinking because money from the federal government is shrinking, and they're having to think about how to spend money for, across the entire state.
Yeah, when you look at the overall picture, if our funding has gone down the equivalent of $400,000 for 2,600 residents, and then you extrapolate that over 9 million residents, if the state was actually to restore that level of revenue sharing, they, I don't think they have it in their budget to do that.
And we're one of the lucky communities because there are communities that have started projects and then the money dried up before they finished.
Yeah.
And they're unable to finish projects. So, yeah, it's an interesting moment.
Thank you.
All right, I will open the public hearing. Seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing. All right.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I don't have any more questions, but the public hea, um, let's see. Oh, oh, sorry. Mayor, I move the fiscal year 2026 budget resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Alenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, yes, thank you.
Thanks for the presentation, it's always really helpful. But also, and I think we talked about last month too, is especially if you don't want to get into all the numbers, it's like the memos that you write before different sections and at the beginning of the budget are very, an amazing summary that help with a, a good overview. So if anyone just wants a good summary, it, it puts the numbers, it tells the story with numbers, so it's lovely.
And the average person doesn't read other cities' budgets, but if you try to read other cities' budgets, you'll appreciate how clear ours are.
I just recently tried to read another city's budget, and I 1,000% agree with what you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah, so thank you, Jim.
Yeah, thank you.
Try not to play budget games.
Yes. All right, let's move on to the Oakland County assessing contract extension.
Yes. There's a lot of dissatisfaction with the county from all corners of the county on this one. And, you know, we could talk about the, the rationale and the way that they got to these numbers, which is somewhat questionable, but even more so the method that they used to adopt this, this change in these, these fee increases was even more distasteful. That said, the county has offered a two-month extension of their current contract. I asked the question about whether then we would prorate the coming 12 months with two months of the old rate and then 10 months of the new proposed rate. Haven't gotten an answer. We'll continue to work on that. But this would be the first step to extend our current contract through August 31, during which time we can consider the proposed contract for the next three years with the county. In the, in the memo is a summary of the rates we're paying in fiscal year '25, and then how those increase over fiscal years '26, '27, '28. And then a brief overview of changes in the new proposed contract that the county's offering versus the current one. Largely, the services are, are the same. The only difference is that they, they've clarified some of the responsibilities and processes in the new contract, where the previous one used a little bit more vague language. No real difference in the services that are offered. The biggest question is, I think it's, the recommendation is to consider the assessing services contract extension to August 31, 2025. But, but talking to the, the proposed contract and what do we do, I always come back to this is something you can't get wrong. And the county has some of the most professional assessing staff around, largely because they've been able to bundle so many communities together and to hire, you know, great professional staff through economy of scale. We don't expect that to change. There are a number of communities that are leaving the county, but not enough that their department should be materially in fact, impacted in their ability to deliver services. The bigger question is, these communities that are leaving now to go to a private contractor, that's an untested, that's an untested step. Most of the communities in Oakland County that don't use Oakland County for assessing have their own assessing departments and have for some time. When you actually benchmark cost per capita that those communities pay for assessing services, it's very comparable to what the county is charging now. So if we were to, say, partner with Royal Oak and pay their same per capita rate, we'd be paying Royal Oak roughly the same amount that we would the county. So that's one touch point for what's a reasonable number for an assessing service.
Just to clarify, like you're saying, what we're paying at the 22K rate versus the 40K rate?
No, I'm sorry, the county's proposed rate
Gotcha.
is close to what Southfield or Troy or Novi or Royal Oak, it's close to what they pay on a relative basis already. So the county is fairly close to their rates.
Okay.
So, you know, those communities, registrials, all of those that have their own assessing departments, the per capita rate is close to what the county is proposing in the new contract. The other, the other side is, do you go to a private contractor? And in all of the communities that have bid this out, there's three that have responded. And the, almost all of the communities have chosen one of them, which is AAS, uh, something, assessing services.
Assessment Administration?
Yes.
Administration Services.
There's another one, WDI, which I believe one community may have chosen. So I think we sit at a moment here where, you know, it's a 90% or 100% increase, but it's really only a $20,000 increase in our budget, which is not fun, but also not, not debilitating in terms of, you know, how we absorb that cost. So I think we have the advantage of waiting to see how AAS works out in some of these other communities, to see if they're actually happy with their services. We don't know anything about them. We don't know the quality of their assessors. We don't know the quality of their services. So my thought is that we renew it to county. There is an out in the contract where we can leave at any time with 90 days' notice to the other party. Should we decide that other communities are very happy and are seeing no difference in their bottom line with some of these private contractors, then great, we have that option available to us. But what we're also finding is that I think Madison Heights, even with the AAS contract, is still seeing a 10% cost increase compared to the Oakland County contract. So it's not like we're going back to the Oakland County previous rates. It's still a cost increase, it's just much less of one, but, you know, there is, there is that consideration as well. So Ferndale, Madison Heights, Oakland Township, Oxford Commerce Township, I think a couple others may have signed on in the meantime, but we have the ability to, to learn from their experience, and I would suggest that we do that. So that's, that's where I'm at now with the Oakland County contract going forward. And we can discuss that more at the July and/or August meetings. So I don't know if anyone else had any thoughts, but...
Yeah, I, part of the reason I'm in favor of the two-month extension is because I really don't know where Oakland County's going to land. I just don't, I have, I know the people that are doing this, and it's very uncharacteristic for them to be this amateur, and I don't have another word for it.
Yeah.
I just haven't seen it before. So I, I don't know what to expect, and I don't know that if we sign with Oakland County that we will continue to receive the service that we've received. I would like for them to commit to that. I think if they give themselves this two months to do that, I think they'll get their own business in order, they'll recover from what was a rather embarrassing and unfortunate moment in May, and get back to normal business. This was not business, I don't know what it was. So, yeah, I'd like to give them their two months that they need to do the right thing. That's my thought. And that was said politely, I think.
So does it not include service level agreements then? Like, so you're saying, like, memorialize the service levels?
It's to say, stay on our current contract for two months, give them two months to figure out exactly what they're going to do from September forward. And I think they will actually benefit from that two months to confirm who's going to be working there, who's going to be doing the assessing services for Pleasant Ridge and other communities following September. All of this is up for grabs. They have, they ran into this without a plan. So they had expected all of the communities to just sort of follow along based on past experience and other contracts, and didn't go the way they thought it would, and they walked into it without a plan. So let them take at least, I'm hoping the Board of Commissioners instructs them to give that time, because ultimate, so the process is if we approve this tonight, it must also be approved by the county on Thursday, assuming it'll be on their agenda for Thursday night, and then it will be available to us in September. If they don't approve it, then I don't know what happens, actually. We'll see. It's completely unplanned on their part.
And I think the issue is they did this initially with the sheriff's contracts.
Yes.
And the thing that they had in their favor, the county at that point, is you can't go out and get a private contractor to be your police.
Right.
And you can't stand up a police department in two months because they did the same thing. So all the communities just kind of took it and renewed for the sheriff's department contracts. This is a little different where there actually is a private sector alternative, right? And if, and if they did something like this with a service that wasn't financial bottom line, everyone would leave. If this was, if we had some agreement with the county for recreation services, we'd be out.
Yeah.
No doubt, because it's not determinative to the lifeblood of the community. It's important, but it's not like assessing where you can't get it wrong. So I think the county may have felt a little emboldened by their success with the sheriff's contracts, not realizing...
Yeah, bad call.
Yeah.
Can I clarify a few things that you said?
Yeah.
Mayor? Okay, number one, you said you want to wait two months to see what happens. Is there a chance in those two months that they may come back and say, price is too high, we're gonna go, we're gonna find someone? Like, is that, is that part of it?
I don't see that happening, but I do see them figuring out what the department looks like, because they're gonna lose some percentage of, of their, their customer base.
And the recessors?
Who knows? They have to figure out how they're going to staff, because another piece of the story is that I think they had agreed that they would make up for a loss, the, the budget for the department wasn't balancing, so their intention was to balance the department budget, which to me makes perfect sense. They made no plan on how to do that other than to expect all of the 30 semi-communities to pay for this service. They hadn't assumed any of us would leave. So not having done any math on what it might mean to the department if people left, they don't, actually, at least nothing that I've seen, would suggest that they had a plan to deal with the fact that some of the communities might leave. So now they need that time to understand what the department's going to look like, given that some have, are most definitely leaving, and...
But they're still gonna be making the decision without definitively knowing who's staying or who's leaving.
I suspect that by July first, they'll know enough. They'll know enough, although, although it's entirely possible that a year from July, some of those communities could leave again because the contract gives them that out. It could be that over the course of the three months, things could change, as Jim has suggested. It's up in the air, and it blows my mind that Oakland County would suggest, even remotely suggest, that property values aren't important. It blows my mind. So, anyway.
May I ask one more question, Jerry?
And the, the flip side of that is, we may find that some of those communities that went to private contractor may actually come back to the county.
Yeah, they might.
Right?
Yeah.
Just my experience with private contractors is that...
Well, and the reality is, the likelihood is these contractors don't have the staff to do the work immediately. So where are they going to employ people to do this work instantly? They're probably gonna go out and get, they're either not going to use people at all, which is an interesting proposition, or they're gonna hire the people that are just sitting out there waiting to get a job, which could be college students, who knows? It's just not good.
So you...
Oakland County should care what the state equalized values are of a property in Oakland County. They should just care. I don't care what the top five list is, that should be somewhere, you should just care.
This subsidy that the county provided to assessing services began and persisted under Elbrooke-Patterson.
Yes.
And if there wasn't advantage to the county, that would not have been the problem.
What's our, 200 million is our property value? 1% is 2 million? We could prob, we could, our property values could change 1%.
Right.
Money gone.
Yeah.
And that's our, that's our piece. It's, you know, it's just, it makes no sense to me.
Do they have another vote on it, or no? They've already, their vote is done?
So, on May 1st, they voted to give more time, and then reconsidered the vote on May 1st under some...
Shenanigans.
Shenanigans. It's entirely possible that they could reconsider their vote again, although I don't expect that to happen. There are, I don't expect it.
Yeah, our representative at Pride, and he was very animated about the topic.
Yeah, yeah. As are other communities. It's the first time I, this is gonna sound crazy, first time I've gone karaoke singing with another mayor, and it was over this topic in Hazel Park.
Hopefully not the last.
So if nothing else, it has brought mayors together for the entirely wrong reason. It is just, it is just, it's bad. So, okay, I'll stop.
You mentioned, when you were talking, you mentioned...
Maybe I won't stop.
Who the appraiser, no, 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 I just have a question for a real, you mentioned we don't know who the assessor will be for, for Pleasant Ridge, or for...
Because Oakland County doesn't, hasn't, at least as far as I've seen, put a plan together that has been provided to the Board of Commissioners in a public setting where we would know what the plan is leading to all of these changes.
Is there, I guess my question is, are there different assessors for different communities? Because I'm looking at the ones that have already set them out, and they're larger, right? So is, are there assessors who have particular skills in smaller communities? I mean, is that something in the future we need to look for? Or is it, I'm trying to wrap my head around it, but is it kind of, one assessor can assess every city, or do we need to make sure that there was someone who, again, is versed in smaller cities like a Pleasant Ridge or a Laker Village?
So, as Jim stated, we are incredibly fortunate to have our assessing department. They are actually gold standard assessing. They do their jobs, they know their communities, the people that support us, the person that supports Pleasant Ridge understands the community. Those that use Oakland County services get good service. Not knowing what's gonna happen with the department, I can't say how people are going to move, it's really not for me to say.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I can't say that if, if these contractors receive the service and are not given a glide path to the business, some opportunity to grow their staff, to support the extra volume of homes, real estate, to me, it adds question to the, I don't want to use the word quality, I'll use the word consistency of, of the assessing that's done. And as far as I know, the county has not planned to sort of do some shadow assessing. Like, if I was making this billions of dollars change to how properties are assessed, I would have the county do it, I would have the new services do it, compare the numbers, correlate, make sure that we're getting something similar so that we're not surprised, because the other part is, if someone's assessment changes dramatically, they can dispute. We spend our lifetime in Board of Review meetings arguing about property values, and that's no good either for them or us. So, yeah. But on the bright side, sorry, I don't have one.
You mentioned a 90-day out, that's without cause?
Just simply 90 days' notice.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
I think the positive here is that we will be able to watch and see how this works out for, I mean, at least there are people who have left. So at some point, we are gonna have some data to say how it's working out for both sides of it.
The biggest thing, the biggest thing I'll be curious about is, with a largely residential community, it's fairly nuts and bolts, right? The county has a lot of expertise with industrial and commercial and all of those other weird things that come up that you really do need experience and expert ability, and the county has all that when we need that, once every three years, because of the nature of the fact that we're 97% residential. With the residential, it's just having somebody who's good and knows the community and is, does the legwork, because it's easy to do a sales study and say that, okay, well, you know, sales per square foot, did this in these nine assessing neighborhoods that we have, and property values, assessed values go up 4.6%, and, you know, you're done. But the real part is looking at all the building permit activity, making sure that all of those additions and those smaller projects are properly accounted for and assessed for, because that's a lot of lost value if you just don't do the legwork to stay on top of those. So we have the, we have our assessor Melissa from the county, and she's out here five or six times a year. She sets up shop in the room here for a day or two with other staff sometimes, and they walk the community, they do, they do the work, they look through all the building permit files. So they're just here to do all that work. Will one of these, you know, contract assessors have the manpower and the time to do that level? I, I don't know. So that's one of the things we'll be looking at. So for us, it's mostly just time on task and the, the ability and the resource to reach out to those, you know, commercial and industrial, uh, experts when we need them to. And then the, the county, the official assessor, the designated assessor in charge is, is usually one person for all of the communities. And then there's the individual staff that works, but then that person certifies, certifies the role. Does that work for everybody?
Melissa is our person.
For the day-to-day and the groundwork, but she has.
Someone.
Someone above her who's, you know, then signs off on and certifies the work.
Thank you.
And the question is, will Melissa be able to do that going forward under the new?
And again, that, yeah, gives us a chance to make sure that.
Yes, exactly.
How many communities have left?
Eight, right?
Yeah, that we know of, uh, there was, I think, six or seven. As of our last census, I, I, the mayor had actually gotten this list, but it was Ferndale, Madison Heights, Commerce, Oakland Township, Orion Township and Oxford had all left. They went to AAS, Groveland Township hired their own assessor. Uh, and then Springfield Township contracted, I think. Springfield contracted with Independence or it was.
I forget the name.
Yeah.
It was another one.
Yeah.
And it's a quarter already. Yeah, those are some big cities.
Gone.
Yep. Yeah.
It's interesting.
Yes, it's surprising to me. I'm out of words on it, but I will have words on Thursday. Yes, I will be there.
Oh, thank God.
I, I kind of need to be there. I'm hoping that this doesn't slip on their, uh, agenda. It needs to be on their agenda. But we have not received the feedback that it's on their agenda and have not had our questions answered yet.
We have not. The agenda is not out?
Um, doesn't mean it isn't gonna change.
Oh.
I'm brimming with confidence.
Great.
Okay, um, any other thoughts before we take a vote?
We're only voting to expend it.
Yes.
Two months under the exact current terms, under the exact current pricing structure.
Exactly.
So that's.
Alongside, I forget how many other communities are probably facing the same question over the last week.
Low risk. I want to send a message, but I'm in support.
Okay. Hold that thought.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
Mayor, I move to approve the assessing services contract extension to August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Uh, may we have a vote?
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Story continues.
Good luck.
And, uh, oop, I'm missing a, oh, here we go, City Manager Report. What else do you have for us, Jim? Something light. Slams his iPad.
There's nothing light right now.
Oh, it's here.
Press out.
Nope, I have nothing. Have any questions about anything happening around town?
How did Cambridge go? Was that today?
They've got it hooked up and Cambridge is back on water service.
Great. And so they are under the boil water?
Yes.
Okay.
They did receive advance notice because we knew that they were gonna be down for a long period of time and also on a boil water notice when the project, when the work was done, so.
How long did it end up taking? And I know everyone is going to be different because.
Yes, yes. I, they were done by three, two, was it?
Around two?
Was it two? I don't know.
That time has been a.
It's a blur.
It's a blur.
It's really just a construct. Uh, so, yeah, they started at eight, they were done by two or three.
Great.
So, uh, tomorrow they move on to, I think tomorrow they're trying to do Norwich and Hanover. We'll see.
And testing.
I remember us having an issue when we turned the valve on Woodward with the bike path.
Oh, yeah.
Built in the late eighteen hundreds.
Yes.
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 Such is the downside to being a, a, an old community.
Yes.
And one day they'll all turn.
One day.
One day, that's what we're doing, one day.
Thirty years from now. Our experience building Oakdale, which touches six intersecting side streets, has taught us that we will not be building the Indiana water main.
I was wondering.
We will, in pieces.
In pieces.
In pieces, okay.
So as we do the other streets, we'll build in the connections to then come later and just.
Tie it all together when it's done.
When we have all the new mains done. That we know.
That's great.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just.
Live and learn.
Take care of that piece by piece along Indiana. So, yeah, we've, we've adjusted course on that one.
That's great. Now, um, have Kemberton and Woodside?
Kemberton was done today. Woodside, they could not get to today.
Okay.
And again, that's the problem with these test shutdowns is you can't schedule them. I mean, you can. But usually it's Oakland County sending somebody over when they're in between the actual projects that they're doing to do that work. So it's very hard to say, you know.
Exactly when they'll be there.
Right, because it might not be that day.
Right.
Yeah, we're gonna come out.
It's actually even more disappointing to be told it's a certain day.
Right.
Only to have it move around.
Exactly. So it's hard to, yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Well, and this is the big thing with infrastructure projects, especially, I mean, it's just hard. They are hard and they are messy and they are unpredictable.
That's why we wait so many years to do them.
That's right, right. People push them off and it is, it, it's like as much as you plan and that team, you know, that meeting was great and you do, you plan everything you can, but things happen, especially these old pipes. I mean, as, as we all know, like I've had to redo my whole sewer line from beginning to end and did all the copper, uh, water lines at that point in the house. And it's like, it's just, it falls apart at a certain point, so.
And we discover things. So the issue with Norwich, the benefit about doing Oakdale is that it ties into the north on the ten-mile, the Service Drive water main. That was built in the eighties as part of the, early nineties, eighties, nineties, uh, as part of the six-nine-six project. So that one's new. So now Oakdale will tie into that main. And then all of those streets that intersect Oakdale, so Woodside, Kemberton, Elm, Hanover, Norwich, Cambridge, all of them will now have brand-new water main connection.
And better water pressure.
Yes, and Norwich, the reason that we ran into the issue on Norwich was because the Norwich and Oakdale valve has been closed for I don't know how long. Because it turned, but we had, so if you go out and turn valves and then turn it open, you may think that it's working, but actually there's two discs that move when you close a valve. And when it breaks, the, it broke with the bottom disc in the closed position, but the valve still turns, so the top disc moved up. So for all of this time, Norwich has only been served from Ridge Road. So if you lived at the west end of Norwich, you were at the dead end of a non-looped water main essentially. So we didn't know that until we got it closed and then, hell yeah, couldn't open it. So that, that valve is being replaced at the Oakdale end, um, when they make that connection. So Norwich will actually have better, better water service.
So here's the bright side. I remember someone at the Superfund Art Party telling a story about watching the valve turn in their bathroom sink.
Right.
Everyone in Norwich will experience that moment when the water flows out even faster than they'd ever imagined.
Which it will be brown at first, so do it in your basement, but then it flows into the house.
Exactly.
But it is, it is, it's very true.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, I mean, that, that, like you said, you're gonna keep discovering things as this project goes along.
And Oakland County did us the, the huge favor of also sending out all of their cross-connection backflow prevention testing requirements.
Oh, yes.
That is really fun.
It was a really big, great gift from them to send those all out at the exact same time.
Yes.
Happening too, so it's been, that, that, well, the theme of the night, it's been super fun.
Pretty stern too. Like, are you gonna cut your water off if you don't get it done in a month?
You know, this is a state requirement that we put off actually implementing until the last possible minute. Technically, we were supposed to be doing this ten years ago, till Eagle. We started doing it for commercial properties six years ago. And then, you know, Eagle finally gave us the lecture about, we had to do it. So we, yeah, it is what it is. These are all just state requirements and we're just the middleman on this one.
Yeah, I met the woman. She, I happened to be watering my garden and she came over and she just asked me, I never, I have not received a stern letter, but she asked me a couple of questions and then looked at my outside spigots and said, you're fine indoors, although she never went in, and then said like, we recommend that you change your outside spigots. And I said, do you have to come back and check it? And she said, nope. And I said, great.
Do you have sprinklers?
I don't have sprinklers and it's just, she showed me my neighbor who had like a correct spigot thing on the top, so she.
I ordered mine on Amazon.
Yeah, and so, and then she said like, we don't have to come back. And I actually have not gotten the letter.
People with irrigation systems have.
Got it. That's the difference.
I was, I felt very fortunate. I passed. I had Nelson Brothers come out the other day and it was truly like a ten-minute situation, so. And then I had him check all my other problems.
We've had a lot of requests that the city cover the cost for the testing for the residents. So if you guys would like to implement the, uh, backflow prevention fee on the water bills, uh, let me know so that we can then pay for those. For people who have sprinklers, the rest of us who don't will subsidize that for them.
So mine was, I believe, one sixty-five. I've seen rates online.
Steaming house calls.
Everybody's looking at everyone between a hundred to like one sixty-five.
Yes.
And we called, we asked Nelson Brothers because we trust them. We don't have a lot of experience with a lot of the people who are doing this service. We asked if Nelson would be interested in doing, uh, you know, some sort of negotiated rate or group thing for Pleasant Ridge and they have so much work right now because Oakland County is doing this for all the communities.
Right.
That the, that they do cross-connection program for, that they were just not interested. And I wasn't, I'm not real keen on finding, uh, a plumber or a service provider that we don't know. Because then if we recommend them and they go and they break something or something happens or, you know, we're involved and I just don't like that.
Yeah.
Liability for somebody that I can't vouch for.
Right.
But only the people who have, because someone actually did say, like, they hadn't gotten the letter, but their street was putting it out on their Facebook page of, hey, we're getting together to have someone come out. And so she was saying, should I pay for this? I don't, I haven't gotten the letter. Do I need anything? And my response is wait until you get a letter before you pay someone to come check it out. And is that correct? Only if you ha, only if you get that letter saying you need something checked?
Yes.
Should you pay to have something checked?
Like Barb Marley said, no letter, no cry.
There you go. Okay. So, yeah, so that's a good, because I think there is some like groups, streets getting together. So yes, don't, you don't need a plumber to come out unless you have received a letter.
Right.
Saying that you need to have it tested.
And then the plumber actually, uh, reports it into the county too.
Awesome. Okay, cool.
But it is a neat idea that if there are neighbors on a street that have, that received the letter, call together, maybe you can negotiate a deal. Because it doesn't take long for them to test and maybe you can split an hour of, of time across five or six houses.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else from anyone? Any other, other business?
What's coming up? The Pride's one though should be very fun. It always is.
Yes.
Last year I thought was even, um, s- super fun because they did do the, the music was great. There was no glitter, but there were, was much other fun stuff.
Yes.
It was very nice. I don't know what else.
I think we're done.
Pool is beautiful.
Pool is beautiful.
And happy birthday, Shawnee.
Oh, yes.
Happy birthday, Shawnee.
Happy birthday.
All right, I think we're ready to, excuse me, um, Canadian wildfire cough.
Yes, same here.
Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.